Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the 2025 Goal Setting Meeting of the Burbank City Council on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, Madam City Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mayor Perez.
I love your brooch.
Oh, thank you. Brooches are back.
Brooches are back. Brooches are back, everyone. All right, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
With pleasure. Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rosati?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Here.
And Mayor Perez?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. We would like to advise the community that there will be one period of public comment today. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during this special meeting only on items on the agenda for the special meeting. If you would like to participate in public comment over the phone, please call now at That's 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the comment period begins, at which time no additional callers will be taken. An interpreter is available here in the front for assistance with public comment, and if you are in need of services, please see them before the comment period begins. Now is the time for public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name as well as the person who is next in line to speak in order to keep us moving in a timely fashion. We have designated this lovely seat in the front with the cover as our public comment seat, so if you hear your name next, you can come sit here and wait for your turn to speak. A timer is also available on the podium, and this is the last call. I just got some more cards. This is the final call for anybody who would like to speak, submit a card, or who needs an interpreter. All right, Madam City Clerk, how many cards and callers do we have?
We have six cards and two callers.
All right. There being eight public speakers total, we each person will have three minutes to speak based on our general guidelines. All right. Our first speaker is Mr. Ron Backs, followed by Mark Scroggs. Welcome.
I guess I didn't know it was only things on the agenda, so I'm not prepared. I was going to do a general comment, so thank you for your time. It's only on agenda items, right? Is what I heard.
Yes. Anything that is considered a council goal is an agenda item, so you may speak on this. Okay. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs.
Hi. So I guess this falls under economic development. I've been talking, you know, like for a while about entertainment. We've talked about reaching out to different people and groups. I do need to talk to Councilmember Mullins about sending an email I got a little while ago. We can go over that later and kind of compress stuff. But just reaching out to everybody in the community when we do this, because everybody has ideas. Everybody comes from a different discipline. Caterers are different than cinematographers, who are different than agents, who are different from photographers and all that. Ways to keep people here, you know, just because we need to kind of rebuild. A lot of it's small business-wise, because that's what most of these people are. So kind of rebuild it that way, so you have the future. Because I know after the last few weeks, you know, between everything else, I've had a lot of people in casting and clients and managers and agents who are like, they're tired of it here. You know, especially people with kids. I was telling that to Representative Takahashi. It's like, they can't breathe, they don't want to be here. So you have to find ways to keep people here. So we'll talk about some of that stuff later. The other thing, just to keep in mind, and I know when I would hear the Brad Sherman town halls, they would bring it up. And I worked when I was at USC at the Olympic Village and for the Olympics in '84. I know there's a lot of prep into it. I know there's a lot of business, a lot of ancillary stuff. I know the Valley was pretty much out of the business then. I know people went to the Tonight Show and that, but there wasn't anything to do here. There, I don't think there are any activities planned up here, but trying to do tourism, because it's such a huge thing. And they're going to be flying in here, so they might as well hang out here. So I just know it was years of prep, and honestly, if we do the Olympics, the rate we're going, it was probably one of the best experiences of my life, and I hope everybody can enjoy it. So that's it for today.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. City Attorney, if I might, do want to clarify for folks. When we say "on the agenda," if something you feel is pertinent or is, you know, pertinent to the agenda and to the goals, that is a possibility. So it's all right.
Yes. The council is discussing this afternoon all of the goals of the items that the city council may prioritize within its jurisdiction. So there's not much that's not within that subject matter.
Yes. So...
What are the goals?
We're creating the goals today. That is the point. So if there's something you feel should be a goal, that is a topic of conversation. Can I give Mr. Backs his three minutes back?
It's your discretion.
Would you like your three minutes back?
I guess.
Thank you. Come on down. And if anybody has any confusion, if you feel there's something we should address during the goals, feel free to bring it up. It's a very broad conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I guess the thing is, because I've been talking about housing all this time, and since we've had the fires, there's going to be a tremendous demand for housing services. We have the non-gouging, or rule against gouging, 10%. So on goods, that might be easy to regulate, but on a service, how do you know what a person charged the last time? Because every job is different, so it's going to be hard to regulate. So my point is, be very, very careful of what additional constraints you put on housing providers, because we're already trying to recover from COVID and other things. I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Kevin Morris.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and everyone present in this space. I would like to talk about the few things that are in the presentation about goal setting. Specifically on transit, I do hope that as we move forward into 2025, that we keep putting emphasis into stronger bicycling infrastructure. That means also supporting a designated bus lane that is going for the BRT, because I do believe that that will simply make it a lot safer for cyclists and for other people in looking for alternative modes of transportation. On the aspect of quality of life, I've brought it up before, and there is that really awesome bridge that goes from the west side to the east side or vice versa by the IKEA. And as much as it is a very safe bridge, the areas around it are not very welcoming. So maybe like finding ways on how to improve those areas to make it more welcoming, because there are businesses there, there is the recycling center around there. But that can also just be an area to explore and to how to make it, you know, how to increase the quality of life of people to visit there, even if it's by public art or other activities that can happen. And lastly, but I'm sure not least, and I'm sure you were all expecting this, yes, on housing. As a participant with the Burbank Tenant Union, we have been advocating for stronger tenant protections, and due to the current situation that everyone is facing hardship, yes, unfortunately, I do keep saying that price gouging continues to happen, and also other practices that are unfair to your residents, such as rent evictions, you know, unchecked family move-ins, and just obscene rent increases. I know that the percentage is something to be debated, but when you turn that percentage into a dollar amount, it is excruciating to see that some of these people simply cannot afford that dollar amount. So regardless of what the percentage is, I think that it's more important to look at what that looks like in dollars. Because again, we continue talking to people that cannot even afford to have a couple of hundred dollars in their savings in case of an emergency. So I implore to continue looking into how to strengthen those tenant protections, and I do implore on how to make sure that housing in the city of Burbank becomes more sustainable. And we do believe that that is achievable. Again, the Burbank Tenant Union has presented multiple solutions that has been backed up in other jurisdictions. So I hope you take that into consideration and take it very well into account as we move into this year, which, as we all know, it's looking very, very difficult for a number of reasons. With the rest of my time, once again, thank you for your services. Thank you for all the work that you've been doing, and I'm really looking forward to continuing to being a resident of Burbank through this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kevin Morris, followed by Adrian De Leon.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Last week, I spoke at city council about climate change and the latest fires that we're having. When I was doing a quick glance through the city council meeting and recommendations here, there isn't a specific goal that addresses heat, local heat or urban heat. And so one of my recommendations would be to have a goal and priority on urban heat. For example, that could be something about increased planting of trees in areas, or on new structures, new developments that you have, having green roofs, all of which would address urban heat. As an example, I believe it was 2024 in September, we had that seven or eight-day period of 100-degree weather. That's something in an urban area, and it's exacerbated in metropolitan areas such as Los Angeles and Burbank. So please spearhead urban heat directly with greenery, green roofs, trees, all that fun stuff. So thank you, and for the rest of my time, you guys have a good rest of your day. Typically, I said good evening, but today, good afternoon.
Thank you for your comment and good afternoon. Our next speaker is Adrian De Leon, followed by Mary O'Hare.
Good afternoon, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, councilmembers, staff, and everyone in the room. I'd like to comment on two topics, so public safety and quality of life. So I believe if I'm remembering correctly, during the last meeting, it was an on-phone caller. He spoke or she spoke about the Burbank CERT program, so Community Emergency Response Team. That's offered in many locations across the county, but it's a more volunteer program. But in terms of Burbank specifically, I believe the chief could speak more on it if you would like to, but there's Burbank Fire Corps, which I'm also a member of, which is kind of an extended portion of that. Great group of people, great group of friends, but it's kind of like that CERT team that's kind of always ready, as opposed to just having a one-time session or a training camp over like the four weekends. And I believe the next CERT class in spring is going to be offered sometime in the early February. So if everyone's interested and willing to look out for that, please get involved in the community. I love Burbank, and I want to see you all around. Speaking of quality of life too, the Burbank Volunteer Program, it's kind of another program that's liaisoned through every other organization in the city, every department, such as Public Works and Parks and Rec. I believe it's hosted at the Jocelyn Adult Center, forwarded by Derek Baker. So if everyone wants to get involved too within the community, I suggest you go out and look for that. You get a whole bunch of emails. You see the announcements on city council meetings and agendas, but also just more of a specific schedule for yourself, I suggest to go to that program as well. Other than that, I give you back one minute and 30 seconds. Have a great day.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mary O'Hare.
Thank you to all of you for your personal courtesy so for the past year, for my neighborhood and myself, and thank you for what you've been doing during these trying times. I just have three items that I think should be on your goals and be laser-focused on these. Quite frankly, it could take me two hours to talk about all the various things we might do, but I've got two and a half minutes. Emergency preparedness, but this has to be defined in a much different way. Part one, why don't we make it a goal that Burbank will be the most prepared government entity, neighborhood by neighborhood, as well as in the staff, et cetera. And what does that mean? We should also make sure that Burbank adopts policies and codes that the city, so that we define geographically the best places to build. We define transportation and building in such a way that we make sure that people can get in and out of their houses, et cetera. My neighborhood is Toluca Lake, Burbank. When the winds aren't going one way, they're going the other. We have had three different fires over the course of time that I have lived in that area. It's just up above us, and there are very important things we need to do. And that may mean saying to the state that it's not acceptable to have barbecue pits at second stories overlooking other homes. Economic viability is the second. Basically, we have to lobby California, our representatives, and engage with the studios. That means that we want you to do this. Come down to my neighborhood and see the people walking during the day. Why are they walking during the day when they're young? It's because they don't have a job. My neighborhood is dependent on the entertainment industry. We are the below-the-line neighborhood. This is very important. With economic inviability, we cannot be a one-industry town. We must, we must be very, very aggressive about getting jobs that will still use the talent of all of these entertainment people, but give us industries that are different. We were a one Lockheed place. Third is please be respectful of the community. And what that means is, I think people have looked at, it is important, other councils, let me one sentence, other councils, when they have a lot to do, meet more than two times a month, and they have, when things were a lot different.
Thank you, Mary. That's your time. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Those are all my comment cards. Do we have callers?
Our first caller is Cory Menson.
Hi, you're on with city council. You have three minutes.
Hi. I was also kind of confused by the agenda, but consider this my F Y C. I think Burbank is already doing so many things really, really great. So again, this is just my for your consideration. First is transit accessibility. I was really encouraged by the Transit Stop and Amenity Survey. Actually, early on, I suggested that we meet letters where they are and put an invitation at every single stop, and that was done right away. The wind had other ideas, but I'm really glad that that happened. I've seen opportunities maybe in more inclusive language. I don't have a car, so I rely on transit, so when I see amenity, I think most of those items are more kind of basic human rights or quality of life kind of improvements. But I gave my thoughts in the survey, which again, I really appreciate. Another thing is I don't pick Burbank bus, because we don't participate in Metro Life program. Glendale, Pasadena, Santa Monica do, as far as I can tell. We're one of the only cities that doesn't. Otherwise, I would use Burbank bus as a transfer to one of the metro stations, Universal, to be a city or North Hollywood. That's just context why I don't use Burbank in-house transit. The other one is the environment. I would rate on the hillside, so I'd love to see Burbank to protecting the Virgo Mountains. I know a lot of people are thinking, you know, this is where the next one is going to pop up. I'd like to see kind of a leave no trace policy with minimal man-made interference outside of trails or central infrastructure. I would also advocate for the removal of the Burbank B. I know that might be contentious, but I look up at the hill every day and it's kind of a pile of combustible material that is being spray-painted once or twice a year. I can't really tell. I also think optically Burbank made those roads, especially with the current landscape. Burbank did this, and we chose to do this. And finally, just Burbank's identity. I know this is long-term goal. Burbank is the media city capital of the world. Solving is the dangerous capital of the world, and it's so. I'm not advocating for more windmills, but owning our media city, I think Mark Scroggs did a great job of advocating, and I agree with everything he said about it, but it evolved. I was laid off from entertainment in 2023 and still looking forward. So I fully support everything that's already been said, and I'm raising my hand too. As an aside, to media capital of the world, we don't have local media coverage, so I can't get local cameras with my radio, and I can't afford streaming services or to pay for local channels. The aforementioned Virgo Mountains may be the issue. I'm just wondering if that can be considered, just so Burbank residents do have access to those local stations and local news when they want to watch. Otherwise, I've been watching this on YouTube right now, and I appreciate it. So again, thank you so much, and good luck with your goal setting.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next caller is Ally Valdez.
Hi. I am calling as a five-year resident of Burbank, a member of the Burbank Tenant Union, and as a member of the Sustainable Burbank Commission, but I am speaking in my capacity as a citizen today. I am calling regarding the goal-setting meeting today, and I'd like to ask our council to make tenant protection the highest priority. I see in the housing section of the PowerPoint, it says evaluate reasonable renter protections, and I'd just like to say that we've been evaluating renter protections for over two years now. It's time to make this a priority and pass policy that will protect 60% of your constituents, including rent stabilization, a rental registry, and substantial eviction protection. I'd also like to ask our council to prioritize not just increasing the supply of housing units, but making sure that this is social housing, that this is affordable housing and truly affordable housing for residents. That's a major priority I'd like to see our council focus on. And then the other two goals I'd like to ask our council to prioritize is addressing climate change, specifically responding to the climate crisis with a just transition by moving away from our dependency on fossil fuels, by greening our public spaces with native plants, and by focusing on a gas-powered leaf blower van in the city. I'd also like to call for protected bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. As someone who walks around Burbank regularly, the amount of times I've almost been hit by a car off of Glen Oaks, off of Olive, it's just been too much. I'd like to ask our council to prioritize public safety in the terms of walking and biking in our city without fear of being hit by a car. Thank you so much. Goodbye.
Thank you for your comment.
That was our last caller.
All right. There being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Council will now proceed to the goal-setting session. We will review council documents and discuss and prioritize city council goals. This time, I would like to invite City Manager Justin Hess to introduce the meeting facilitator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, council. So before you begin your goal-setting exercises, I'd like to thank first the council for all their leadership and support over the last two years since the last goal-setting session. So I think we made a lot of progress. We've accomplished a lot. We've done a lot. So I do want to acknowledge your guidance, and we do appreciate your guidance and look forward to working on the new goals and priorities that will be set today. Also, before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge our city team for all their hard work and accomplishments over the past year. They've been hard at work. We have representatives from every city department here today to listen in, to make sure that they're taking notes, to respond to whatever the priorities that are going to be set today. So as you start to establish priorities, I urge you to remember what makes Burbank such a special place to live, play, and work. I encourage you to be forward thinkers and focus on how we can make Burbank even better. In addition to setting goals and policies, council will also be asked to approve and adopt the How We Work Together document, the Expectations of Staff document, as well as the Code of Conduct. This is an important step to lay out our norms and expectations for working together and commit to developing strong working relationships between staff and council, as well as between council members. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our facilitator, Ms. Riva Feldman. Ms. Feldman has over 25 years of experience working in local government and served as the city manager of Malibu. Riva has, she has worked for, she works with many cities throughout the state. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Feldman to start your goal-setting exercise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Justin. Appreciate that. And good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers, and to the community. My honor and privilege to be here in Burbank today to help you with some very important discussions about the work you're going to be doing for the next year to two years. So as Justin said, the first order of business that we'll be going over today are your Code of Conducts and how you work together. And there's actually three documents that you will be reviewing and going over. There's a lot of overlap between the three of them, so I'm going to sort of speak generally about them, and then we can get into specifics. And if any of you have any changes, additions, edits, we can do so as we go through each one. So first of all, you have all been elected by your residents to serve and lead your community. In my conversations with each of you, it's very apparent that you care deeply about your community and your residents and your businesses, and you have taken an oath to serve them and make Burbank the best city it can be. And I work, as Justin said, with a lot of cities, and this is an amazing city. You're very well-run. You're in wonderful financial shape. You have amazing staff, and you have stability, which really helps you to set the stage to do very good things and great things. So I think it's really important to step back and look at the council manager form of government and why it's so important and how it can work well. The council is elected at large or in districts in many cities, and then the council is able to appoint a city manager and a city attorney. The city manager then hires staff to do and carry out all the things that the council decides. So you set policy and procedures, and the city manager and staff carry those things out at your direction. And so that when that works well, it really works. That's how we get things done in local government. And so being able to follow that and be respectful of that procedural setup and how you treat staff and how staff treats you, and that working relationship and that collegiate cooperation that can happen is really important. As I said, each of you obviously have a lot of commitment to your community. You each have an individual agenda as a council member. You each have an individual agenda as a council member, and so in able to get those things done, you work with your staff to move those priorities forward. So just some high-level things that I think cross over in each of the three documents. I think it's very important that we agree to disagree at times. You all have your own ideas and viewpoints, and it's completely appropriate, and that's the, how democracy works. So totally fine, as long as we do that civilly and in public. We have those conversations cordially and respectfully. Totally fine to not have to vote all the same way every time, having that mutual respect, and then following the established procedures and processes that are laid out in these documents, in other legal documents such as the Brown Act. We are here to serve the public and the community, and as leaders in our local government, we set the tone of our community. So being able to be respectful to each other and to staff shows how we can set the tone for our community. And I always like to say that good leaders do more than just lead, they actually create more leaders. And so by being a leader in your community, you're paving the way and showing other people how to be good leaders. And remember that your words and your actions really do matter, that people are watching you, and that it is important to be the city that is the role model. We don't ever want to be the city that ends up in the headlines and ends up, you know, setting the bad way for other cities. So we want to be the ones that are the glowing example. So with all of those wonderful words of wisdom that I've collected, let's go through the different documents that we have. And our first one, is it going up? Is How We Work Together as a Team. And so again, some of the things that I just talked about, working together, having professionalism, communication, transparency, are all key parts of this document. And so I just wanted to put it back to the council to see if you have any questions, concerns, changes that we could address at this time.
We're talking about the How We Work Together as a Team and the Expectations of Staff documents?
The first one we're going to do is How We Work Together as a Team, but if you wanted to jump ahead, we could do the other one as well.
Oh, no, fine. We can do this one first. That's fine. I mean, I like it. We've seen similar stuff before, so I'm comfortable.
Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. I do have one reminder, but also a comment. Obviously, this council has worked well together, including now onboard, you know, council member Razadi, but the previous council, and I do appreciate that. I think we have had a lot of respect for each other. I watch other council meetings, and I see what goes on in there. So I'm very appreciative for that, because we get the business of Burbank done professionally, even if we disagree. The one thing I just want to remind all of us, and they grabbed my attention, because that kind of the words I live by all the time, and I'm sure the public has heard me over and over saying, which is number one, it's really focus on the issues that transcend personal agenda and set goals and make decisions that are the best interest of our entire community. I want to make sure that everyone here in this room is comfortable with that, because sometimes, as council, as human individuals, we tend to maybe pick one group versus the other and not look at the entire community. And this is something I live by, and if I don't, I'd like to be reminded at times. But I appreciate that number-one statement that we have under our working together. Thank you.
Anybody on this side? No? All right. Well, thank you all for the comments. Councilor Mullins, I wholeheartedly agree. Think we could all use the reminder at times. We're all human. And I think we've all done a pretty good job, as I read this, of working together as a team and of keeping that civility and respect. And as long as I am the chair of this meeting, I hope to continue to keep that civility amongst the five of us, because we need it, and the folks at home expect that from us. So, all right, let's move on.
Did you want them to take an action on each one of these documents, or do you want to do it all as a whole?
It's the chair's pleasure to either make a motion and second and vote on each one, or whether you want to do it collectively on all three.
I don't know how you all feel. I'd rather do it collectively, since we're already moving on. Let's move on to the next document.
Wonderful. Okay. So your next one is the Expectations of Staff. And having been a city staff person my entire career, I take this one to heart. But again, you know, you are a very effective and thoughtful group of people leading your community, and I, again, you have a wonderful staff and a city manager, and so I know there's mutual respect on both sides. You know, I had the honor of speaking with each of you individually, and your respect for what your staff does is very apparent. So I guess I could open it up to the council to see if they have any changes. Just be nice to each other. It's pretty basic.
Any recommendations? Councilor Anthony?
Yeah, this is the Expectations of Staff document. Two changes and then one highlight. I wanted to just bring up the very first one under Effective Communications. The very first sentence says, "Reports and presentations will be made in understandable and non-bureaucratic manner." If it's possible, I'd like to separate reports and presentations. I'd like to just make a change to, "Reports will be made in an understandable and non-bureaucratic manner," and then add a sentence, "Public presentations shall be simplified for a broad audience." And the reason I bring that up is, we often have very comprehensive reports, and they're done in a very understandable way, but it's multiple pages. Sometimes people showing up to a meeting are here for a different item, and they're sitting through the presentation, and something that is so overwhelming, they might glaze over it. So I really like for staff, when they do the presentations, to have a very simplified and understandable presentation, separate from the report. And the reason I want to ask that of staff going forward, not that they haven't been doing that, but to really emphasize that, because more and more people are watching these after the fact on YouTube. They are sharing links with their friends over email and stuff like that. So I think there's an extra step that we can take when we do like, you know, the PowerPoints and that stuff. So that's what I'd only ask.
Councilor Mullins?
I don't know if this is on our, can we say when possible? Because at times, a topic like the solar topic that we just went through the other day, it is complicated. Sometimes we're not able...
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And to be WP's credit, you did make that as understandable as possible to the layperson. Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah. So the first sentence says, "Reports and presentations." I want to take presentations out of there, so the rest of the sentence will stay the same. And then the next sentence will say, "Public presentations shall be simplified for a broad audience when possible."
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you for that suggestion and the awareness of how different the staff reports and the presentations, the purposes of them are different. I really appreciate that. I'm a little concerned with the idea of simplifying it to Councilmember Mullins' point that sometimes when we simplify things, we're omitting very important parts of a complex issue. And sometimes the only thing people see are the presentations. They may not even see the staff reports. So I think that concept, I understand the concept you're saying. I think I would be more comfortable with created for a broad audience, just kind of generally, because I think the staff has a good sense of how simple or complex to make it, and just to have, make it really clear that those presentations are for the broad audience, and staff reports are more detailed with more like, maybe a little bit more deep dive. Simplified, there's just a, I don't know, just something that lands a little bit off for me, but I get the point that you're trying to make.
So you're saying public presentations shall be created for a broad audience? Can I counter with curated? How would you feel about that?
Sure, that's fine. I mean, curated is a little bit, but that's fine, yeah. But the idea is like, I don't want it to, I don't want the community to think that we have to simplify things for them to understand it. Like, it's still very understandable if it's not simple. If it's thorough, it's still very thorough, but it's just created in a way that it's meant for a non-professional and non-expert to understand. But a non-expert can understand something that's not simple.
Madam Mayor, if I could give council an example of a 25-year living project that we couldn't make simple, but instead we brought it back in five study sessions. You haven't seen the end of it, but that's the Burbank Housing Corporation Debt Restructuring. So when possible, I think we can work within that. Some concepts are so complicated. In that case, we were dealing with $50 million worth of debt and $20 million worth of accrued interest. So where possible, schedule permitting, we were able to break that up so that both the council and the public could really understand the broad scope of that. We have the luxury of time with that one.
I'm okay with created, if you wanted to get rid of simplified, because it does sound like we're talking down to folks.
Councilor Razadi?
I'm not sure we need to wordsmith it to death. It says, "Reports and presentations will be made in an understandable and non-bureaucratic It's pretty plain as day is what that says, but, you know, in the spirit of cooperation, if you want to change it a little bit, but it does say what you're saying.
I know. And for me, I think it's just...
Mike?
I think it's just, so staff knows that there's a little bit more emphasis on the presentation to sort of whittle it down. That's all. That's all.
I would just say, I agree. I don't want to be, reinvent the wheel. But to your point, Councilor Anthony, if you would like to add that in there, I have no problem with it. My only concern is the simplify, because maybe not us in this room who have heard the discussion, but perhaps somebody who has not heard the reasoning, the connotation, might see this document and think, "Simplify? Do you mean dumb down for me? I don't need you to dumb things down for me." And I don't think anybody, you know, here in our community needs that. So I think, I don't care if it's curate or create.
We can go with created. I'm okay with that.
They are next to each other in the thesaurus, so either one is fine.
Okay. I'm good with that. And then the only other change I was going to ask for in the second paragraph says, "Staff reports should include where appropriate pro and con arguments." If we could just put the word "both" in front of there? Both pro and con arguments? Just so we're not getting one, just in case. That's all. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, I just wanted to highlight the bottom of three at the, basically at the top of page two, the last sentence on number three, under recommendation. "When staff recommendation differs from a board or commission decision, staff will present counsel with the board or commission's decision and reasoning for that decision in additions to staff's professional recommendation." I just want to point out that not, you know, it's rare, but often, when I ask for why a board or commission either went against the recommendation or didn't align correctly, there wasn't too much understanding of why. And so I would just like to highlight that for staff. So if you're in the room and you're at a board or a commission and you see that they're going against it, really, really make sure we put down in writing their reasoning, some words that we have, either from the chair or from the people who voted against it, because that really helps us in our analysis, rather than us having to track down the board member, "Why did you vote against that? What happened in the..." So we would really appreciate that.
I would just jump in to say I agree with that and some kind of summary, because I have seen multiple council members ask for that type of explanation on different items. So it has been kind of a recurring theme, even if it's just a brief summary saying, "The board voted this way, this was the discussion that was had, and this is how they ultimately got to their decision." It's helpful. Most of the time, the minutes don't have that detail.
Staff will definitely re-up on this item and reinforce that and be mindful of it as we move forward. That's not a problem.
Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. And if I may add, not to add anything in here, but in the topic of talking about boards and commissions and the recommendations, as the liaison for few of them, I think it's also important that staff lets the boards and commission know the decision that council has taken prior to the decision they're making. Because I have seen at times where the boards and commission think that this is their ultimate decision, and, you know, "We're against it and take it to, this is how we vote and take it to council." But I think we, it's good to go over what council's ultimate goal is as a reminder, because sometime I feel like telling them, "It's not really up to you to make that final decision, it's up to council." And I don't want to mislead them, thinking that this is the decision's coming back to council, and that's what we have to comply with.
Got it. So noted, we'll be sure to be mindful, more mindful of that.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes, just one quick thing. For the number five, no surprises. First, I want to commend staff for being so proactive with meeting with all of us before each meeting, particularly the city manager and all the staff that come into those meetings, to give us an opportunity, really deep dive with our own personal concerns in a way that we may not be able to access in the public meeting. Also to make any clarifications, so that we approach the topic in a way that it's intended. So I appreciate that a lot. And there's, most other cities that I'm aware of don't do that. In fact, I've bragged to other cities that we do it, and they want to know, "How do you do, how do we get our city manager to do that?" So just putting it out there, if any other cities are watching. And to that point, there have been a couple times where there have been surprises at our meeting that I felt like, particularly around what council is expected to make a decision on. So I think it's not a huge problem, but just to reiterate, like, just remind us, be very clear about what it is that we're making a decision on and what we're being asked to do. So especially if there's multiple parts, to say, "Okay, first, you're going to give us feedback, we'd like feedback, and then decide on this," just so that we know what we're deliberating, because sometimes I think the conversations go off the wall, because we're not 100% clear what our aim is. Thanks.
Got it. Me and the assistant city manager, we're just talking about that literally two hours ago on a report that's coming to you next week. So that is loud and clear, especially in the recommendation that you know, like, okay, so this is what's happening. So when you read the rest of the report, you have context of what your, the expectation of the council will be. So we get that. Sometimes it's hard, but we will definitely try to navigate that as we move forward.
Thank you. And I do believe the moment we were thinking about specifically was a study session with BHC, where we were expected to make a decision, but we weren't truly squared away on that at the beginning. So that's helpful, but nothing nefarious.
We try to keep you on your toes a little bit, so...
I will just say, going back, I would agree, Councilor Anthony, with the staff report should include where appropriate, but I would like to add both equitable or equitable information on both pro and con arguments whenever possible. It's helpful to see the same amount of information for both. We have had staff reports where sometimes maybe staff knows a little bit more about one side of the issue versus the other, and it would be helpful, I know it may be more work, I feel you, I've been staff before, but to do the deep dive necessary so that we have comparable pros and cons or comparable both sides of the issue.
We will try. Sometimes the, either the cons or the pros outweigh the, so I mean, it's hard to just equally balance things, but we will certainly look at trying to provide you the whole context of your decision-making.
And if I can clarify, especially on things where the city has not taken a position, right? There are things where staff will bring something forward, and we already know what is in the best interest of the city, or staff has a recommendation, but there are issues where sometimes both sides are just put out to the table, and we're very much communicated in the staff report. It's up to you, make a decision. We don't have a recommendation. Those are especially times when it's helpful to see both sides of the issues. So if council's okay with it, I would like to add, when appropriate or possible, both are equitable information on both pro and con arguments. Any other, nothing else? The only other thing I would add, and I don't know if this is a point that needs to go in here, but part of the feedback that it seems we're giving today. Follow-up is helpful, maybe it's through the city manager, but I have noticed last year, there were a couple items, they were mostly the former mayor's items, but a couple items that came back, that there seemed to be some confusion. He had asked for something, and when it came to staff, it was, thought that the ask was different. I had an item like that. So if there's any confusion ever, the follow-up, I think, is helpful, be it any of our items. Say, Councilmember Razadi asks for a report on, I don't know, on bike lanes and making sure they go down Chandler, but staff doesn't remember the street. It's helpful if we come back and ask, because I would hate to see his work, time, effort wasted, when we bring back a report on Olive and bike lanes on Olive, for example, right? So I don't know if we can incorporate that somehow, you know?
That's noted. Oftentimes, we go back and watch the video, and if we have trouble, we'll ask whoever Oftentimes, we go back and watch the video, and if we have trouble, we'll ask whoever was the requestor.
I would just really encourage that because sometimes, you know, it comes, there's that little discrepancy and we can solve, save ourselves an extra step and save city attorney extra hair. Anything else? Nope. Okay.
And I just wanted to weigh in that the conversations that you have with the city manager prior to a meeting are a great time to vet some of these questions and concerns and encourage you to have those conversations. And that's why having a good city manager and a good working relationship is so important to moving our form of government forward.
Thank you. And since we're closing out this chapter, I do want to say, we are really grateful to our city staff. We know we have put you to work this year. I'm especially going to shout out CDD. There's so many projects that we push your way. We know, we recognize it, and we're incredibly grateful for the work you do. I see you in the back of the room, Patrick. Thank you. Okay.
All right. So we'll move on now to the council code of conduct. And in the interest of time, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but again, this is a very important document that sets the tone of the city and the leadership within the city. I think it's really important to remember that there are processes of how you come to an agreement and to remember you speak as a council as a whole on items that you've discussed. Totally fine to speak about whatever you want as an individual, just not on behalf of the city. And again, all the other things that we talked about. And remember, you need to be ethical and follow the law and behave appropriately. And if there is an issue, your code of conduct certainly spells out steps that can be taken. And I hope you never get to that point where you have to look at these code of conducts of how to deal with that. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council for any proposed changes.
Any changes? Counselor Member Anthony?
Well, I would just say, in the interest of time, we, I mean, the four of us took a very long look at this last year. Counselor Member Rosati, if there's anything you saw that stuck out at you. I know we had a long discussion about this when we did this last year.
About the code of conduct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's really no penalty for breaking the code of conduct. That was my only issue. If you violate the code of conduct, you get admonished. I don't know what really that means, but I just don't see any teeth to this code of conduct. But I, you know, I don't think that, I don't know what can be done about that, but that's the only thing I noticed.
So ultimately, it is the voters who elect council members to the body, and it is the voters who have the ability to recall council members. So the only other teeth are when the council approves a council member to serve in a special position, such as the mayor or the vice mayor, the council may, as they deem appropriate, remove those titles. But otherwise, if someone is a council member, there's no real punishment that the council can do other than the embarrassment of censure and the discussion. And that's really it, is the painful torture of going through really the, an embarrassing or difficult conversation on camera, which will be there forever. But that may not be enough to dissuade folks.
Counselor Mullins?
Just if we can indulge me and somebody reads number 13 and what that means to us as council members. And then I have perhaps language that I didn't see in the code of conduct that we may just briefly add.
There's a few 13s. Which 13, the page?
13, page three of 14, under the code of conduct.
Okay. Would you like me to read that for you in its entirety?
Just, yeah, number 13.
Advocacy. When designated as a representative of the City of Burbank or City Council, members shall represent the city's official policies or positions to the best of their ability. Statements made by the members about the city's official position should reflect the majority opinion of the City Council, which is defined by current or past official City Council action via City Council vote or consensus. Members may clarify the city and council views by starting statements with words such as "the city" or "the council." When presenting their individual opinions and positions, members shall explicitly state that they are presenting on their own behalf and are not representing the City of Burbank or City Council, nor will they allow the interference that they are representing either. Members are expected to clearly identify their comments as individual or personal opinion when attending political rallies, employee union strikes, or other such events. Members may clarify their views by starting statements with words such as "I support" or "I believe" and/or clarify that the city and council have not taken a position on a particular topic when appropriate. Members have the right to endorse candidates for all city council seats or other elected offices, but it is inappropriate to mention or display endorsements during city council meetings, advisory body meetings, or other official city meetings. Members may use their title when conducting official city business for informational purposes or as an indication of background and expertise, carefully considering whether they are exceeding or appearing to exceed their authority. Council members must avoid unintentional influence and/or creating the perception that they are abusing their authority or attempting to obtain special consideration or favors by identifying themselves by their title, such as mayor, mayor pro tem, or council member, in circumstances where their city position has no relevance.
Thank you. So I think I want to just to make sure we're reading this into the record so we're all very clear to the expectation of us as council members, mayor, vice mayor, just us as a body, and what we are expected to do when we're in public and representing the City of Burbank. The other, the one item I didn't see in here, and maybe, and this came up recently, is also identifying ourself. If you are not even saying, "I'm a council member," but identifying ourself with our, what we're wearing, you know, having a shirt, "A cis council member," or mayor, or vice mayor, and being in a public setting where we are speaking on behalf of the city, but it's clearly stating on my jacket that I am a council member and wearing the official city logo, that is a dead giving of our title. People notice these, and especially if it's posted on social media. So how do we, and the question is probably the city attorney, do we need to add language in here to clarify that also what we wear, given by the city, is something that we need to be careful about representing our city?
Well, you can have an expectation or a code of conduct with each other about whether you can wear your official city council member jackets or T-shirts or whatever. But as a personal note, what you wear is also expressive or can be argued to be expressive conduct, so there are limitations on how you can control each other ultimately. So this is really an agreement to behave in a certain way, but to Counselor Member Rosati's point, there are limitations into how you can enforce it.
So there is no need to add any additional language to also indicate the, what you wear also that might be perceived as you're there on behalf of the city. It doesn't matter. It could be at a rally. I could be, if I'm not on official city business and I'm maybe going against what the city stands for, and I'm wearing my official City of Burbank. Because I know for our safety personnel, our police, our fire, even our general employees wearing uniform, in a certain places, they're prohibited to be there. So I just want to know what applies to us.
So employees have this aspect of on duty or off duty. And as you would probably all tell me, you're never off duty. So, and as to what one council member believes the city stands for is up to them, right? And up to their constituents, is to what they believe. And you probably all have different interpretations of that. So you can agree that, for instance, council members shall not wear official city branded clothing at anything other than official city events. That would be quite narrow. That's up to you to agree and then to enforce each other.
Thank you.
Let me go to Vice Mayor Takahashi, who's been waiting, and then I'll go back. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still listening to the conversation. I have a comment about another item for now, but thank you.
Is there a comment on this item?
Yes, specifically 13. Because I was listening, it's the only instance in this that says mayor pro tem instead of vice mayor. Could we change that? Because we have a vice mayor and not a mayor pro tem.
Good catch.
Yeah. We typically use vice mayor, so that's fine. If the council agrees, we could change that. But I do want to see if we could put something in there for Counselor Member Mullins' concern. I think there should be at least a quick statement that council members should take care not to convey non-city business or be present in political actions while wearing official city garb, at least. Can, I've been trying to wordsmith something, so can I propose something for you? So kind of that, at the end of that second paragraph, if we put something along the lines of, "Council members should refrain from wearing apparel with official city branding when, at such events voicing their opinions/positions." Something along those lines.
Personal opinion.
Personal, sorry, personal.
I would say personal or political. The Assembly has something very similar, and it really is about separating government and politics, which is the goal, right? Nobody wants to, and I hope it's nobody's intention to police me if I'm going to Trader Joe's in my council jacket. But the goal's really to not mix the two, right? So I would be okay and amenable to personal or political views.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. This is, I think, we need to make it clear for also new council members that don't understand or maybe don't know, and it's not to you, Councilmember Rosati, it's just for all of us, for future council as well, to know that we, I shouldn't be wearing my city official uniform being at a rally that I am personally involved in. It has nothing to do with the city, but it's clearly stating that I am a city council member and the automatic opinion is there, I'm there on behalf of the city. So I appreciate.
Are you referring to that NASCAR photo?
You know, there's a lot of photos out there on social media, so I'm trying not to get in trouble. But I agree, I shouldn't be penalized because I am, after a meeting, going to Trader Joe's to pick up something and I'm wearing my jacket because, you know, so we all understand that walking that fine line, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you all. Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Sure. I think if we can always remember, it's good practice, and 12 years ago when I sat down with our city attorney, whenever you come up to any kind of microphone, to immediately say, "I am not representing myself as a city council member. I'm representing myself as a member of the public." I think if, even if you're wearing the jacket, I think that does a lot in conveying that you made the effort. So I think it's important and incumbent upon us, especially the positions that we hold, every single time we are out in the public, we should say, "This is my personal opinion. I'm not speaking as a council member." And I think that solves a lot of problems.
To that point, you may have times where you are found wearing your items and you may be forced with a microphone in your face or somebody asks a question. I think it's common sense, right? At the end of the day, clarifying what your positions are, the "I" versus "City feels this way" is very important and very simple. And the one thing I will say on this item and the whole council policies is I will remind my colleagues, our city staff, our city attorney, our city manager, our resource, if there's ever a question, that is a time to go to them. And I would say, before you jump, it's always good to ask a question. Justin answers all times a day if you have a question, especially for matters like this. So please, if you're doubting, if you're unsure, ask them. Vice Mayor Takahashi, for real this time.
Thank you. And on that point, I know, I think that even when we're sure, it's still important to just confirm and to say. So I think there's sometimes where there's appearances or there's something that we're doing that we think, "Oh, well, it's obvious that we're in, you know, we're talking about our personal opinions." But it may not be to that one person. So it's important that even if it's obvious to us, even if it seems obvious to the folks in the room, to say it anyway, just to reiterate it and make sure it's really clear in that moment before the next thing is said. Also, we get quoted all the time, and so if we're going to get quoted, it's important to have that quoted with it to make sure it's really clear if it ends up in the paper. I do have a general comment, too, if it's okay, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Are we beyond this item? Okay. Great. Moving on to the next item. Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yeah, so just generally, I think, earlier to Counselor Member Rosati's question about the purpose of the code of conduct. So having been involved with a number of nonprofits in the past, that code of conduct, when you're working with a group of folks who are governing together, a body, doesn't always have teeth. But the thing is, is that in order to work together in a group, it's important to have an agreement, a social contract, on how we work together. So this, this piece of paper, to me, is an agreement between the five of us to how we're going to conduct our team, working together as a team. And that when we vote on this tonight, this afternoon, we are making a commitment to one another, to behave in a certain way, that we respect each other, we respect the city that we are leading, we are respecting the community members, and that we respect the staff. We respect everybody. And that that commitment means if we don't do the things in here, that then we will then, you know, make the proper corrections and apologize or do whatever needs to be done. This is also, it's so important that when we're doing the work up here, that we trust each other, that we trust each other, but not just that, but that the city trusts, that the members of the community trust us. And when we make a commitment on this document and we abide by this document, it increases the level of trust in our community. So this is what this document is. It is not something in my mind to enforce. We should never have to enforce this. This is an agreement amongst professionals to do the right thing, and that when we don't do the right thing, it should be something that we should correct because that's the right thing to do. So our culture in our city, our culture of the governance of our city, this is the document of our culture. And so we are agreeing to abide by that. So that's to me, it's like, it's why there's, for me, I'm not bothered by the fact that there's not enforcement, because it's not something we should be relying on enforcement to make sure it happens. We should be relying on professionalism, the fact that we're all adults in this room, and that we want to work together for the betterment of our city and not because of personal gain. So that's what this is for. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Takahashi. Counselor Mullins?
Thank you for bringing this up. And I think there's a bit of a struggle, and I'm glad that we're having this dialogue because there is a misunderstanding perhaps in the community that when they see something happens and when they see a post on social media or they hear a council member has done something that maybe was not upheld in the code of conduct, their automatic reaction is to get ahold of one of us and question, "What are you going to do about it? Why haven't you done something about it?" And there is a notion that perhaps that we're able to sanction, but what does that mean exactly? And that we have to take action. And this is where the city attorney comes in. So having this dialogue publicly is very helpful to understand what the city attorney said and also the expectation of each other, that we have to conduct ourself in a professional manner that applies to what we do here every day in the City of Burbank, and that we're upholding that oath that we are going to behave professionally in the best interest of the city. So this is good for all of us in case something happens, to go back and listen to this discussion and be aware, the public is watching and, you know, as they should. And if we do something wrong, they bring it to our attention immediately, whether they contact you or me or, and so therefore, we always have to know, there's eyes on us, there's always cameras on us, and we have to behave professionally and according to our code of conduct.
And if there are no other questions, we do have to start moving along into our goals. And I'll just close it by saying, a lot of these things are common sense. We've just written them down and put them in a book. To Counselor Member Takahashi's point, I think you said it quite eloquently. I'll put it less eloquently. We're all adults and we're all responsible for ourselves, and I think that's very important. I think members of the public are going to have disagreements with us at varying times, and that's very fair. And I think it's on each of us to own up to our points and how we speak. And so I think it's a reminder for us. I think it's important for us to keep it in mind. And to the point of the city attorney is using it as something that might eventually publicly shame someone, I would argue that we've had some very good discussions in the past that more so brought clarity and brought a purpose forward so that we could have this code of conduct and remind each other how to act. And we all learned something from it, I think, all five of us. So that's the point. I think Counselor- I think Councilwoman Rosati sees you not in agreement, and I think we're all in agreement there.
Last thing I would say is, I said this the last time we voted on this, it does help to write it down.
All right, so with that being said...
For me personally, it very much helps to write it down.
With that being said, I think we should move on to voting on all of these written documents.
Voting on as amended.
As amended. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve all documents as amended.
Second.
All right, motion by Anthony, second by Mullins. Let's take a vote. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you to everybody for your comments and thoughtfulness. I do think it's really important to have those discussions. So, we're going to move on to our goal setting, and again, what I did was I took the information that each of you individually shared with me and found where we had commonalities, and tried to narrow them down. So, we have what I'm going to call seven different buckets, seven different subjects with goals under each of them. And given the time, what we should do is go through, and if there's anything you'd like to take off or add in that is super important to you, if you agree with it and your co-council member agrees with it, we'll just move through them quickly. So, the first one is city services, and recruit and retain high-caliber employees was something that everybody felt was important, and I think we can agree it is. Maintaining balanced general fund budget and robust reserves, looking at some long-term financial goals, streamlining and standardizing online applications. So, that would mean if you go to one department and fill out an application for a permit, and you go to a different department, they would all look the same so that your residents and users have familiarity with how those things work. And then heard amazing things about the new concierge service that you have implemented, and so budget-allowing, expanding those services to assist the folks that you serve. So, those are the five in this category, and I guess I will turn it to you, Mayor, to see if there's any changes.
Does anybody have any changes, comments, questions, thoughts about this? Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. So, Burbank, as we all know, this is a category... Oops, I'm sorry?
Library.
Library. So, this, I thought maybe I couldn't hear me. Our city, as we know, is, city services is what really makes Burbank shine. A lot of things make Burbank shine. But the fact that staff responds to every single information, question that comes in, that our fire and our police response, and there's just such high-quality service here. So, this is, I think, a very, very important section to continue on with that amazing reputation that we have. A couple of things in particular, I don't know if they fall under these categories, but I just want to highlight to make sure that we are still putting a lot of attention on them. The first one is the 3-1-1 app. So, the 3-1-1 app is an amazing addition to our city services, and I want to see it continue to be expanded and implemented, in particular, using it for, like, our emergency that we had recently was an app that we, was the first time we got to see it really in action in that level, but that is an opportunity there. So, that's, for me, a really important look. And then, just kind of general, we've been doing so much better about this, and to continue to improve on this is making sure that information is accessible for our community. So, an example of that is public record requests, that we now have that, some of the public record requests are easier to get now, just automatically. So, continuing on this path of increasing the access to information for our community and pushing out information so that, because we are very fortunate to have a very involved community, that also means that they're very hungry for information. So, I just want to continue, make sure those two things are, continue to be under city services. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilwoman Mullins?
I think this one, I heard Councilmember Rosati talk about, which is communicate, finding ways to communicate with our seniors who are disenfranchised and maybe don't have electronic connections. So, I don't know if they think this would fall under city services?
Yeah, I was looking for, excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman...
Yeah, I was looking for the senior category, but I do have that concern that we have a lot of seniors with just a flip phone. They don't have a computer, they don't have an iPhone, and how do we communicate with them? How do we get the message out to them? And how do we bring them in the fold?
So, maybe we can add some wording, you know, making things accessible to all residents and visitors alike, or something like that, so.
If I might add into that conversation, one of the things I added as another bullet was prioritizing user-friendliness in our systems, and that includes our senior and our disabled community. So, that's a priority, I think, in my opinion, that should be in our city services throughout, be it the application, be it 3-1-1, be it when you're calling. Our focus should be user-friendly. We are, as a city, as a government service organization, we are oriented towards public use.
I think those are really good additions, so making sure that they're accessible and user-friendly kind of captures all of that, and you do bring a good point to seniors. Certainly have a 93-year-old father myself, so I know about the flip phone.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. I wasn't sure what bucket I was going to mention that on, but thank you for bringing that up.
Councilwoman Anthony?
To that point, for number eight, when it comes up, maybe we do a follow-up to include something for all ages, but that, when that shows up, we may want to include something.
Where's that?
On number eight, quality of life, we can talk about all ages.
Yeah.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That'll come later, on number eight. But on number, for city services, under number three, it says develop long-term financial goals, but it doesn't say what the goals are. I would just like to add in, develop long-term financial goals for solvency and stability? Or do you have any other? I mean, that way we know where we're headed.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if I could. So, these are really good. I do not want you guys to do, go into the weeds tonight, so, today. So, what I would like to do, because I know we got like 40 minutes, because some of you guys got to get out of here, but what I'd like to do, this is really good, I really like this, you know, the categories, the buckets, this is going well. What I'd like to do is, you know, to, once we establish these, you know, whether it's three to five, six items within each of the buckets, what I'd like to do is come back with specific work program action item plans next month to you that are really like, okay, this is what we're going to do this year, you know, and then come back for you guys to adopt that and bless that work program for the next several months. So, we will do, we could fit that into an action plan for you, we just want the goals for today. We don't need you to figure out the exact, you know, whether that's a five-year plan, a 10-year plan. We'll come back to you with those things. We want the high-level goals, or, as Reba says, those buckets.
Great, so with that direction...
Yeah, I'll rescind that, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, with that direction, I'll say to my colleagues, if, we'll go through them, and if you feel that a number is missing here, if there is a, you know, these are large buckets, city services, quality of life, et cetera, within those large buckets, if there's a subcategory that you feel is missing, that encompasses things not included in the other numbers, that's the moment to chime in and share that and ask if your colleagues are amenable to including that. I will say, I still would like to see another number for prioritizing user-friendliness, for especially, with a special consideration for seniors and disabled folks.
So, as I interpret each of these comments, it really sounds like information accessibility was a label that Vice Mayor put to it. It's a broad category encompassing both services, public records, accessibility to all the things we're putting online. So, if you just added a number six with that, to the city manager's point, we could bring back work program.
Great, perfect. Any other buckets that we're missing there? No? All right, let's move on to economic development.
Wonderful, and again, this helps the city manager and the city staff start working on the budget, and a lot of these things will be brought forward as part of your budget process, too. So, economic development, obviously super important for any city. So, the five bullets that we've come up with here are diversify economic base, create incentives to attract and retain media and studio partners, and enhance relationships with existing companies, complete outstanding specific plans, improve business retention, and encourage the addition of high-quality, unique retail and restaurants, and increase visitor-serving amenities to attract tourism associated with Elevate Burbank, the 2028 Olympics, World Cup, and Super Bowl. Anybody have any big things to add here?
Councilwoman Mullins?
Thank you. I have a question regarding number three, which is complete the outstanding specific plans. Shouldn't that be under housing? Because this addresses our specific plans for our media district and Rancho and...
I mean, it's land use. I mean, it will impact the economy. I mean, you could probably put it in either. Either way, we'll capture it, so I wouldn't worry, I wouldn't stress over it too much.
No, I'm not stressing, I just wanted to know. I'll let you know when I start, I think you'll know. No, I just wanted to know if it's the same specific plans that we're talking about, because I relate that to housing versus economic, but I can understand that it's all encompasses under economic.
It covers a lot of ground, and it does, it's all the land use plan, so it's Golden State Media District Downtown, so it is Rancho, so it is all those. So, there, it does, it kind of crosses over multiple categories. We just left it in economic development, but...
And I do have one other question, and I don't know if it would apply under the media district, but I also want to see our enhancing of our filming process and encouraging more attraction to our filming process, to bring in people here in the city of Burbank that would help our economy as well. So, I don't know if that...
Is that what, do you think number two would cover that?
I think we're grabbing that at number two.
Okay.
Creating incentives to attract and retain media and studio partners. I feel that it captures that.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mullins, if I might, to that point, I see where you're going, because I thought of the same thing. I would like to ask, if we can say, create incentives to attract, retain, and support media and studio partners, because a lot of what I think this council is seeing, and I think we're all in agreement that we need that film tax credit, we need a lot of support, and we want to advocate for a lot of support for our industry. So, I think that encompasses those extra categories, that extra piece to that.
Great, got it. Anybody else?
Any other thoughts? Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This may be assumed, but just to clarify, because diversity can mean different things to different people, so I just want to, just to throw it out there, that to me, diversity, when I hear that, it's not just diversity in industry, although that's important, but also diversity in size and diversity of form of businesses, because there's small micro businesses which we are more and more supporting, but also form. A lot of times when we think of business, we think brick and mortar, but there's a lot of businesses in our community that are working out of their homes, working onsite, working hybrid, all kinds of different forms, and so to make sure that diversity is at all different angles.
I think that's a great comment for the city manager when he brings back the getting into the weeds part of it, to make sure he captures.
I'm good, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else on the economic development category? No? The only thing I would add is a comment to the city manager as well, when talking about the media industry, thinking about ways, to Ms. O'Hare's point, about diversifying and looking for other potential media jobs that are not just entertainment in case folks need somewhere to go. Okay, let's look at housing.
Okay, housing. So, we have five here as well. So, the first one is, and I know these are all very important to all of you, so I did really try to capture them the best I could, and happy to wordsmith if we need to. Evaluate reasonable renter protections and disseminate effective public information to the community. Increase the supply of housing units. Analyze opportunities to rezone vacant commercial properties. Encourage and incentivize mixed-use developments, and collaborate with partners to effectively address and reduce homelessness.
Councilwoman Anthony, then I'll go to Councilwoman Rosati.
Let me see if I beat you to it. On number four, encourage and incentivize misuse development and for-sale units. Can I say for-sale housing units for that? Yeah.
Councilwoman Rosati, and then Councilwoman Mullins?
I would like to add at number six, if you guys will entertain it, and that's to look at city-owned property and how we can leverage that and be creative to create housing with some of the properties that we own. Good?
Any thoughts on that? Okay, yeah.
Maybe something about consider the use of city properties to meet housing needs or something like that.
Yeah, and I gave the example last meeting with the Jocelyn Center.
I would add review in there, because that's actionable, right? Review city-owned properties. I don't think it's something we've ever done, and I think it's very much an effort we can take.
I would like, without putting more stuff on staff, I'd like to see a report on what we own and potentially what we could leverage to create senior housing and, you know, public housing for...
How about review and analyze the use of city properties for housing?
Yeah.
And you will be seeing that as part of the downtown TOD, because we have multiple sites that we're proposing for housing. But also through the Surplus Land Act process, that has to come to council to designate, and the first priority goes to housing, schools, and parks.
Great. Councilwoman Mullins?
It was just to support the ownership, opportunities for ownership, and it's been captured, so I agree with Councilmember Anthony.
Vice Mayor Takahashi? The only thing I would say is, for parity's sake, for the first one, adding review and analyze instead of evaluate. I agree with the speaker, we've done a lot of evaluating, it's time to review and it's time to analyze.
I will say that the city manager and I went back and forth about five times on that word, so we definitely came up with some of those, too.
We're bringing stuff back, as you know.
I'm wordsmithing you. I also have a thing about parity. Okay, anything else on housing? No? Let's move on. Public safety.
Public safety. Well, I will take this moment, just given what has happened in the greater Los Angeles area over the last two weeks. Obviously, all of you are very concerned about emergency preparedness, both for yourselves as an elected body, for your staff, and, of course, for the community. And so, I'm really glad we were able to add this as an important part of your work plan, and really encourage you, having been through many mega fires, and a lot of the work that I do is in disaster response and recovery, that you are, as a city, taking that very seriously to not only prepare yourselves to support your community, but helping your community be as resilient as possible in the face of potential disasters. So, thank you for adding bullet number one, which is encourage emergency preparedness and resiliency throughout the community. Number two is enhance regional coordination with partner agencies to be prepared for a major disaster. So, just to expand a little on that, that would be working with your neighboring cities and the county to make sure that you're participating in trainings and establishing relationships before something goes awry. Number three would be maintain staffing of police and fire departments and increase appropriately as your city grows. Four is launch community service officers program, and number five is enhance mental health evaluation team services. So, hopefully, we've captured all of the things that were important to you.
Councilwoman Anthony?
So, prior to the WINS event, I would have never have thought of this, but we had so many downed power lines that in number three, can we say police, fire, and public works? Because I think they did maintain those jobs.
I'd almost do all city departments, because I'm a little biased. So, especially as the city grows, I know it's under the public safety, it almost kind of needs to go over to the city services if we're going to do all city departments, but I kind of understand what you mean, and I know there's been a big effort for us as far as safety services, both police and fire, to make sure that we get up to the budgeted numbers as far as filling those positions. So, I mean, a lot, like, all the power was BWP, and we had forestry out there with crews, and that's park and rec, so it was a lot of different city departments.
Yeah, and I would say, if you wanted to be broad, first responders and safety personnel, because they are considered first-line responders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think it applies to our city services, because under recruitment and retain high-quality employees, I think maybe retain and keep that service level up, whether it's BWP parks, public works, and across the board, because they're all under safety, because we need them all in case of an emergency.
So...
Councilwoman Anthony?
You feel the very first one, number one, covers that, that we're okay, I don't need to change the number three on here, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. I'll rescind that. That's fine.
All right. Um, seeing nothing else, the only thing I would mention, and normally, normally I don't know that I would have considered this a bucket, but I think lessons learned from, from the recent fires that we've seen our neighbors go through. And although we've been incredibly lucky and we've remained incredibly safe in Burbank, that may not always be the case. And we need to remember that we have a hillside and we have areas that are very vulnerable. So if my colleagues are amenable, I, I'd like to see a category on home hardening and fire prevention. I know that it's, I know that this feels like maybe it could fall into emergency response or other things, but I, I have heard from community members specifically asking about their home, their homes and how they, we can support that. And I do want to reassure the community with that. Councilwoman Rosati.
I was just going to tell you, from a real estate standpoint, there are documents that you're signing for home hardening and protection. And then our hillside has a pretty rigorous inspection process, but maybe as a general for the city that maybe is not in the hillside, might, might not be a bad idea.
And I would say as a, putting it out there, look, these are all our priorities, right? And I think for our community, we need to say this is a priority for us right now. It may not have been last year, but it is right now. And I think that's the reassurance our, our neighbors need across the city. I think we all are very sensitive to having our homes burnt down. Many of us went out and bought safes. Many of us have our backpacks by our doors. And I think this is a very important and, and close to home topic.
Mayor, if I might just jump in, I think the bullet number or number one where it says encourage resiliency, I think that captures the home hardening because that is a resiliency strategy. And so I think the city manager, as part of the documents and information he brings back, could grab that home hardening part of it, but absolutely encourage all of you to harden your homes.
So if we could include that when we come back for discussion, I'd really want to see something on that and how we can support the, the entire city with that.
And, and there's some very good models that are being done in other cities that you can certainly emulate.
That's specifically where I'm going, but I don't want to get ahead of myself. Councilwoman Anthony.
If you're okay, what I'd like to offer is in number one, encourage neighborhood-specific emergency preparedness, just to encompass hillside.
And I was going to say, across the board, I know, I know everyone's got fire at the top of mind, but you know, God forbid we have an earthquake. I mean, preparedness is on all levels and that, that education should be out there for, on all levels, whether it's fire, earthquake, you know, being prepared for that. So I think.
And, and you know what? I will say to Councilwoman Anthony's point, I would like to see neighborhood-specific because that is something that we've also been asked. I, I think preparing at the hillside is going to be very different than those of us in the flats, very different than those of us that live next to a freeway, that those of us that live, you know, in, in more dense populated locations of our city, in our bigger building structures than those who live in a home. So I, I think for, for our community's reassurance, right now is the time. Everybody's asking about emergency preparedness and what we can do. And if we can specify that by neighborhood, even including where are your health, fire, et cetera, resources in your community, we'll have a much more reassured and much safer community. Are you okay with that?
Great. Moving on. Once we're safe, we can have a good quality of life. So here we are. Quality of life. The first one is increase safety for residents by adding lighting and security cameras in public spaces. Two is increase the number of community events. And on that one, I did hear from all of you about different events. We did not get into specificity of those events here, but that's certainly something that the city manager can delve into for you. And number three is increase visibility, support and access to arts and creative endeavors. So turn it to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Man, you're quick to the button. Councilwoman Anthony.
I like these. I can pick them up. To the point made earlier about seniors, if for number three, increase number of community events for all ages, I think would be a simple addition there. And that way, we're capturing our youth, we're capturing seniors, we're getting everybody.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is the right slide to put it into. I would really like to, to make sure that we highlight or focus on somewhere in these categories, the concept of third spaces. So a third space for those who don't know, so a first space is your home, second space is your work, and third space is where you gather with your community. And something that we have really, I think from COVID, have desired more of is to be with our community. But I also just see in Burbank with the demand for events and how excited people are about Chandler, there's just really a huge push and a need for a third space. I think that encompasses a number of things, but I wanted to have a third space concept in there so that when we're looking at our specific plans, we're looking at transportation, we're looking at housing, that we have third spaces in mind, really overtly rather than kind of a side idea. Thanks.
Would you be amenable to where it says number two, increase number of community events and third spaces? Just because I'm thinking in my question for you, Mr. City Manager, was going to be where does a library fall into this?
This is your guys' goal. So you tell me, you know.
So I would love to add that there on, on number two and third spaces, knowing that we're encompassing our library, upcoming McCambridge project. I know those are big, big priorities for, for this council.
For all ages.
Yes, for all ages.
Yeah, third spaces are accessible to all ages, abilities, interests. So they could be indoor library, outdoor parks. They could be, you know, there's a lot of ideas I want to gather.
So I know we, when we went through the, how we work together and the code of conduct, we were talking about making it, making terms user-friendly for the public. I don't mind putting third space in there, but I just feel there needs to be something in parentheses that qualifies. So if somebody's looking at this in a week from now, what that means. So if there is a user-friendly.
What are you saying? That's not like common vernacular. Are you talking?
What about community events and spaces? Or public spaces?
Yeah, public gatherings, public spaces, community spaces.
Community spaces, I think would cover it.
Yeah.
If I may, um, Councilwoman Mullins. Would that encompasses and includes the open spaces for our parks? I mean, those are, would that be considered the third space? So making our parks more, you know, secure, light, provide cameras, and this will be a safe place for people to belong and, and be there as a third space, right? So I think that's part of what our overall goals is to provide that open space for our community.
I think the first one provides safety to those existing public spaces. And what I was hearing from the vice mayor, that you wanted to not only increase the number of community events, you wanted to enhance or make more robust existing community spaces. Am I hearing that right?
But those will be identifiable as our open space, our green area.
What community spaces, at least in my, my definition of it, could be the library, it could be your parks, it could be town center, those types of things.
Right, right. And I, I think I was trying to address the city manager, what does that mean? This is how I perceive it to be, what it means.
I think we were confused on the third space, which I know is a modern term for community.
I'm very happy that now a lot more people know what that means. So we're excited about that. Yeah.
Asterisk, third spaces. Alrighty. Anything else on quality of life? No. I hope one of those categories in there, Mr. City Manager, there's Burbank on Parade.
So that, that is coming back as a report. So that was requested.
It's number two, community events.
Space.
Fourth space. Alrighty. Moving on to sustainability and resiliency.
Okay, so integrate solar power in new developments. Consider restrictions on the use of landscape equipment. Require 100% electrification of new construction and encourage the installation of additional EV charging stations. Did I miss anything?
Councilwoman Rosati.
I would like to see us be a little bit more creative when fighting urban heat and maybe as a pilot program, use reflective paint and see how that works. I know Texas and Arizona, Nevada has, has used it pretty successfully. I know that we're going to be laying down a new parking lot for the dog park. So maybe that might be a time to like, give it a whirl and see if, if we can bring down the temperatures because we're basically putting a heat island in a park, which I'm against, but we need the parking and I want to see the, the park get developed. So if we're going to do it, let's do it in a sustainable way. And then the other thing I was thinking of, and I've mentioned, and I know it's costly, but expanding our recycled water program to, I'd love to see it somehow get into our residential neighborhoods where you can water the parkways and the lawns if need be. I know that our water department is very close to turning recycled water into drinking water. I heard we're very, very close. So maybe we'll put that on the back burner if we are that close.
So I, I heard two additional ones. Look at urban heat strategy solutions and then look at expanding our recycled water system. It's the high level subcategories.
And great minds think alike, Councilwoman Rosati, because I had right here reflective paint. I remember you brought it up, oh my God, about a year ago when you came to council?
About a year ago.
Yeah. And I think that's a great idea, those creative solutions. I, I would like to ask for, for the recycled water piece, could we broaden that category to talk about water? I see a lot of different priorities here. Don't see water encompassed here. Just a reminder, Burbank does not have any water rights. We import all our water and we should be as involved as possible in ensuring in different ways, be it recycled water, be it water storage, that we have the water that we need. And, and we should be prioritizing that because it may not be the issue right now that we're all thinking about. We're thinking about fire. But as we saw in our neighboring communities, it's an, it's an issue. And, and we need to, we need to find ways to protect ourselves and to encourage maintaining our water usage here.
Rainwater capture, yeah, all that.
All of these things fall under like prioritizing, I don't know how you unword it. You all, you all think of better wording, man deep. Yeah. So I'd like a bullet point on water resources. I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Takahashi and then Councilwoman Mullins.
Thank you for broadening that category. And I think I'd like to broaden it even more to say really overtly that we, we are, have been so good at this and I'd like to continue looking at innovative, out-of-the-box, new idea ways to address all the issues that we're talking about. So just, even though we have specifics on here, but to kind of give you a clear direction that it's okay to come up with new ideas that we haven't thought of and to look at those and to see if we can be out-of-the-box thinking. Because I think sometimes we get, we're looking at what is already available, but there's so many things constantly coming. But we've already been good at that. So I want to make sure that we really emphasize, and that's, that's kind of a character of our goals. Thank you.
Got it. And I do give credit to BWP. I mean, they got iron flow battery. We, we got a lot. I mean, so I, I do give them credit, but yeah, we could make sure that we're, we try to be as, not bleeding edge, but cutting edge as we can be.
And when we come back with our, with our fleshed out ideas, I'm sure our city staff will get very creative. Councilwoman Mullins.
I wanted to make sure that our general manager's point was heard, which include electric and water, not just water, because that is also an issue that we need to deal with, with continue rising of producing electricity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple more thoughts, maybe there's specifics. But I want to make sure that we include in sustainability and resiliency, our tree canopy and our tree plan and just green space in general. Make sure we don't forget that. And then while it has its own category, it's very connected as transportation. So we're looking at EV charging as one of the aspects of transportation, but the whole broad transportation network impacts our sustainability, environmentalism. In fact, the greenhouse gas emissions, the biggest offender is, is gas cars. So the whole transportation system, they're kind of connected. Just want to make sure that they stay connected in our plan. Thanks.
Great. Anything else in sustainability and resiliency? No. Okay, let's move on to transportation.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for being innovative thinkers. Okay, in transportation, which will be our last bucket here, the first is coordinate efforts with the development of high-speed regional rail. Encourage bus rapid transit systems. And three is prioritize multimodal transportation systems, including bike lanes and safe walking paths. Anything else on that?
Not all at once. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Okay. So I think that maybe we could combine, one and two to me are kind of in a broader category of an integrated transportation system. So high-speed rail, BRT, our internal bus, MetroLink, all in the, you know, the freeways, the airport, it's all integrated. So I think while we're looking at coordinating efforts and, and working on the BRT, looking at it from a systemic position, so maybe like combining them into, into a coordinated transportation program that, that includes these things, that's integrated or working together. And also in that integration, in my mind, is the transport, transportation hub that we have at the downtown Burbank MetroLink station where everything comes together there. The MetroLink comes together, the incoming BRT comes together, the freeway's there, our roads are there, potentially a bike system's there. So everything comes together. And so I want to also include that in our integrative program as well. Thanks.
To capture first one, you're essentially saying like prioritize the coordination of our different public transportation systems because right now we have metro, we have our own bus system, we have potentially high-speed rail, we have the BRT, potentially the BRT, right? Like all of these systems, but they're not coordinated on the map. So I, I guess that could be a bullet point, like coordinating all our transportation systems. Councilwoman Rosati.
I'm just going to bring this up. I think our transportation gets inhibited when we develop properties and we don't consider Uber, Lyft, drop-off sites and cutouts for deliveries because often, and I learned this on the planning board, and often a project will go through and then all of a sudden you'll see a moving van and it's blocking a major corridor or it's parked in the middle of, of the center and everyone's stopping, it's creating congestion. So I think transportation needs to be incorporated into our development. So when we are going to develop a large project, there's a place for Uber and Lyft to safely pull over and not, you know, double park. And same thing with deliveries and, and things like that.
So I think some of those can be addressed by staff as part of your specific plans and your complete streets programs. But thank you for those ideas.
And generally, what I feel a lot of us are asking on councils is this analysis of, of the grid, right? Of transportation, of moving vehicles and, and what's really happening. Councilwoman Rosati, back, back last year, former Mayor Schultz and I asked staff for an analysis, and Councilwoman Takahashi you asked as well, of, of our Uber, Lyft and MetroMicro and to see what routes they were actually taking in our city. Are there heavily used routes? Where are they? And if that could inform our, our own bus line transportation, where we go, and inform other community development infrastructure situations. So that's really important. I think maybe it's utilizing existing data because I, I felt that that has been something we've asked for in the past in our reports because we want to see it. To your point, it's helpful to what we plan in the future. Let me, let me go to Councilwoman Mullins and then I'll go back to you. Councilwoman Mullins.
Thank you. My point addresses parking availability. And I, I'm trying to see, I think it would be under transportation because for future parking and our infrastructure needs as the city grows, we're going to need to start taking a look at our parking availability, especially with the housing restriction that we have from the state where AB 2011, you can put a, an entire building without providing any parking. I know we're trying to look at our bus system or, you know, transportation, but that is a reality that's happening with the amount of ADUs and, you know, that the city's already seeing an impact. So I think we need to take a look at our parking. And it could be, this is part of what you're bringing back to us, Mr. City Manager, but I want to throw it out there, too.
So consider parking availability as a city continues to grow.
Yes.
Something like that, or continue to develop.
As a visitor to, to your community, I will commend your parking situation, though. Thank you for making it so easy.
All right. Count, Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Thank you. And one quick add while we're thinking about the whole holistic system is that inevitably, and I don't know if it's going to be this year, but inevitably we're going to get automatic autonomous vehicles like Waymo. So making sure that that's included in there when we're looking at how that's going to be, where they're going to stop, how they're going to stop.
Can, can you repeat that?
Oh, Waymo is, it's a, automatic vehicles and a self-driving, thank you, self-driving. Oh, Waymo is, it's automatic vehicles and self-driving, thank you, self-driving cars, there's no, there's even not even a steering wheel, you just like get in and it drives on. And those are in LA now.
I mean, I'm not getting in, yeah. You may be getting in.
They're coming, they're coming. And then the other thing too, that we're seeing more of, and I'm not sure if it's transpo, but I definitely want to put in just an awareness, is drones. There's drone uses just in general, but drones are being looked at for delivery, which has its own internal transportation system, like in the air. And then also drones as a, large drones as an alternate to flying vehicles. I know it seems really far ahead, but that's the direction some folks are going. So just kind of having this open mind to like transportation beyond what we know, but also potentially bringing in new stuff, just being ready.
Perhaps a point on analyzing new and alternative modes of transportation, their potential impact on our city. Yeah, I don't want to see the self-driving cars going around in circles and call to sex. Councilor Mullins.
And to that, adding to drones, there's also robots that we've witnessed in the city of LA that do deliver food to businesses. So is that going to be our future in Burbank? So it's something that I guess.
And that's the beauty of local government, that you have that control, so.
We can ban robots in the city, is what you're telling me?
Too late.
I'm sure the public will love an added council goal saying banning robots. You can explain that one. Alrighty, anything else on transportation? Councilor Rosati, no?
Not on transportation.
Okay, so we are done with transportation.
We are done with all the categories unless the council felt we missed anything, and then look to the city attorney if there's a formal action they need to make or not.
Before we continue, just generally on our council goals, Councilor Rosati, do you think you had a point to add?
So I think it, I think it's important to mention and find out which bucket this category fits in, is our nonprofits are a huge part of what this, with our city. We work with a lot of nonprofits, FSA and Boys and Girls Club, and I think it's important that we acknowledge and put them in a bucket as part of our goals.
So yeah, I think that would go under city services, and I would say something about collaborate with community partners.
Continue to have support and have successful relationships.
Bullet point, because I think we failed to, I didn't see it, but I think we failed to acknowledge it, and I think we should.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I add, continue to collaborate with our community partners in our school district, just to ensure that we're adding them as well? All right. Anything else? Councilor Takahashi. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
I have one that I wasn't sure where to put, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one that I wasn't sure where to bring it up, it's kind of a broad topic, which is childcare and supporting for families. So right now, I feel like every bucket could include that somewhere, and one of the challenges is finding childcare, affordable childcare, but just in general, you know, supporting families in housing and in services and relations and all that stuff. So somewhere in there, squeeze it in.
Probably under quality of life, so continue to support families and children.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And I would say increasing child, like supporting, increasing childcare opportunities, because that is something our community has asked for, to increase the limited services in whatever capacity the city can.
Councilor Anthony?
Just a final comment before we vote on this. You know, just a couple weeks ago, we had no idea that there would be, what, 10, 15,000 homes lost in LA County. People are struggling to find places to live. I think our priorities have shifted in the last couple of weeks, but we're still having that mind towards housing. It is a huge, huge part of the city's everyday business, it is what's on people's minds, the cost of housing, housing affordability, units that are available. But we are still committed to our prior goals. We are tackling homelessness every day, we are keeping people housed, we are keeping our city safe. I think shifting our priorities to meet the needs is what this council should be doing. We do need to adapt, we do need to change. Like we said, there's technologies coming that are going to drastically change our lives, our economy, our jobs, how we raise our kids, what's happening in the schools, all of that stuff, it's new and it's different. And we do this every year, and I commend this council on addressing the new and changing world that the city of Burbank finds itself in. So I'll be supporting this.
And the city attorney said we actually don't need to take a formal action, that the city manager does have all of your feedback and will be bringing back a more refined document for you.
So I will be coming back next month, we're going to meet with, I'll be meeting with the executive team, we're going to come up with tangible, actionable goals per all these, bring that back to you for you to, at that time you could tweak accordingly, add whatever you want to do, and then we'll adopt those, and then that will be our work program for the next several months.
Thank you. And I just want to take a moment to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful discussion for all of the things that we've included. These sections are going to be our guiding stars. Sure, we'll have subcategories that may change, and of course, things that may come up, God forbid, natural disasters and such. But I think these really are the categories that we should focus on and we should ensure are guiding stars as we move forward. I encourage you, I do this every year, and I encourage you to do it as well. Take the goals, look at them every now and then, and then see what we've been active on, what we've been missing. I know Vice Mayor Takahashi and I definitely both have done that in the past, and it helps to find sections that we can re-bring to staff and remind of our priorities. So thank you to all of you for a great goal-setting session. Thank you to our staff for working on these diligently, I know it's not easy. And thank you, Mr. City Manager. And finally, thank you, you've been wonderful, thank you for everything you've done to help us put this together.
My pleasure, thank you, Mayor.
All right, and since we don't have to do anything, I think it's now time for adjournment, Mr. City Attorney? Wow. All right. Well, thank you, everybody in the community for being here and those folks listening in, we appreciate all your input, and please remember, there's always more time to give us input. So if you heard something missing here, there's still time to let us know what you'd like us to prioritize. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, for a joint meeting in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, right down the street, second floor. Thank you all, and have a great rest of your day, it's still light outside.